Good evening, council members and staff. Today we have, I call this meeting to order, and today we have one item on the agenda, which is the Budget Department Presentations. I would like to introduce our AST Administrator, Jan Ha.
Thank you, Council President Perez. I'm going to share my screen with you all. All right, can you see my screen? Okay, great. Good evening, Council President Perez and members of the council. Tonight, we have the beginning of the department presentations. We're going to start with Priti Tridhar for Executive Services, followed by Chip Vincent for Community and Economic Development, and then Martin Pistusia will present the Public Works Department budget. Next week, we will... Hang on a second. Oh, it's not... I'll blow it up here. And then next week, we will have Administrative Services, Community Services, Police, City Attorney, Human Resources and Risk Management, and Court give their presentation. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Priti Tridhar to start with the Executive Department.
Thank you, Jan. Good evening, Council President, council members. Thank you very much. It's my honor to present the Executive Department budget. I have 15 minutes, which is not a lot of time. So probably, one of the most important things I wanted to share are that the budget details for the Executive Department budget starts on page 3-6 of the preliminary budget book. So as I share the details with you, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to send these over to me so that I can provide you with greater detail and responses to any questions that you might have. Next slide. The Executive Department is responsible for a lot of the core functions that impact the entire city. We've got 13.6 FTEs, but we also do a lot of our work through key contracting services. As you can see, we've got the public defenders contract. We've got a lot of other functions, including intergovernmental relations, equity and inclusion, cable channel production, so a lot of services that we coordinate through the Executive Department. Thank you. Next slide, please. So this year, as with the entire budget for 2021 and 2022, it's been a baseline budget, so there have been no changes from the last time. For 2021, our proposed budget is $4,977,882. And for the proposed budget for 2022 is $5,039,971. Some of the most important divisions or areas within the Executive Department include the emergency management function, intergovernmental relations, which includes both legislative, regional, as well as federal, executive operations, which includes the mayor's office function, core citywide interdepartmental functions, citywide communications, the court, public defenders contract, cable communications, which is both negotiating the cable contract as well as managing the city's Channel 21, organizational equity, inclusion, and development, as well as the print and mail services. Again, details of each of these functions is available in the preliminary budget book, as well as the rent and results section of the budget document. Thank you. Within the rent and results section, we've also defined the performance metrics for each of these, and as you know, we have the city service areas. Once again, these are core and critical as citywide metrics, safety and health, which is one of the core areas for the city representative government. A lot of the work that happens for you as council members, where you are actually reflecting the core values of the community, and internal support, a lot of the functions that we do from the Executive Department actually helps for the entire functioning of the city. Next slide, please. The mayor's office, you know, I always say when we walk in, anyone walks into City Hall, the first face they see is the smiling face of the people in the mayor's office, but it's a lot more than that. It's providing, you know, the leadership for the entire city, the government, to really reflect what we stand for, the strategy, the implementation of all the decisions that apply uniformly across what the city stands for, and to ensure that we are accountable and that the city's goals are being met, and, you know, that we really serve our citizens. This slide, as you see, reflects the city's goals, and we take this very seriously. Customer service is number one, and we've always stood for that. We, you know, expeditiously, I got that word wrong, but you know what I'm saying, address citizens' concerns, we provide leadership, and we really work hard to strengthen the relationship that we have with our communities, both in terms of our communities in Renton, but also with our regional communities, whether it's suburban cities or whether it is countywide. Next slide. The other thing that we are very, very proud of is our accomplishments in terms of our regional relationships and our government. The last few years, we've really worked hard to not only expand on our legislative relations, that we've always done a great job, but also our regional relationships. I've highlighted just a few that are purely great in terms of the monetary funding that we brought in terms of some of the legislative. The list is really long, and I encourage you to please look at the details in the narrative. But some of the things that we've done just at our recent session, we brought $5 million through the lodging tax for Renton Housing Authority. You know, our Renton Homeless Feeding Program got $206,000. The Basic Law Enforcement Academy, which we've always wanted to make sure we had more classes, we were able to get classes from there, and not to mention the most important, which is the sales tax credit for affordable housing. But this is just a sample, the list goes on. Jan will not be happy if I go through the entire list, so I'll move to the next slide, please. One of the most important things that we do, and we do this together with you, is the business plan. The city's business plan is a guiding document, which guides really all our plans and really all our work. Every person in the city, the guiding at the business plan is, you know, our roadmap for what we do for the city and really what we do for everyone who is in Renton. And this year, we took some really major steps with our business plan. We facilitated the adoption of changes to some key goals in the business plan, and we also updated the Resolution 4414, which was anti-racism and very time-critical. And, you know, with the Executive Department, it's not just words on the document, but it's really the leadership of how we take this to the next step, we implement the changes, and how we make sure that this translates into people's work. In addition, we also work on the legislative and regional agenda to work that with every department and with every, you know, with the council, with the administrators, and then finally, we really help to make sure that this makes sense in Olympia. Next slide, please. This year, we also took a really critical step with the business plan, where for the first time, we made some significant changes in terms of our business plan when it came to environmental sustainability, and also some initiatives to pursue and increase our efforts to increase mobility, open spaces, tree coverage, and greenhouse gas emissions. We've stated that, but the real efforts come now as we go, you know, to dive in, to implement, and to create these as sustainable and accountable measures throughout. Next, please. I'll go a little bit deeper into some of the areas we talked about, including, you know, public inclusion and equity. We had a presentation to council just a few months ago, where again, we talked in detail about all our accomplishments. So again, this is very much at the top level, just to kind of give a quick sense. You know, we know that we've done several things. One of the best things I think Renton is known for is we take inclusion and equity very seriously, and we inculcate and include this at every level. You know, it's part of entire city and not just one area. Next slide, please. We took this very seriously when it came to our employee base and in terms of our hiring. This is a slide that shows our annual career fair for city employment. The next slide is one example of where this really made a difference. You can see the two charts, the two graphs here. 2016 shows what was our ethnicity in terms of the vacancies we filled, and from 18%, we've gone to 32% in 2019, and this came from deliberate, intentional working to both expand opportunities and to fill opportunities. Next slide, please. The Inclusion Task Force, this is a photo of the members of our task force, and, you know, they've been part of doing just a lot of work with us to look at what are our policies, and we've worked with this group on various efforts, and one of the ones that we're very, very pleased with, and it's breaking my heart to use this word nearly, we're nearly 75% census count, and believe me, we will be at 75% by the end of the month, because we've got until the end of October to achieve 75% as of the last number I had. And Benita, if you correct me today, I'll be ecstatic, but we were at 74.9% at our last count, and we have to thank our ambassadors and all these members here who have helped us get there. This is another slide to show some of the, which is more than our accomplishments, I think our priorities are important, where we are continuing to enhance our progress with inclusion, equity, and social justice. We are committed to community forums throughout the city to hear from our public. We continue to build capacity and to be accountable. We are continuing to work with council and community and task force members on priorities. We continue to integrate anti-racism into our work. Our focus is on contracting, inclusion tactical plan, and we've already started working on membership into GARE, all these things, as you know, council, are the areas of focus that we've added into our business plan and the resolution. Moving on to the area of communications, again, and I want to share this with you, one of our unsung heroes, especially during COVID, is our print and mail shop. This is one group that has remained open during COVID. A few hours after the first case of COVID was announced in our state, we were out there getting the messages out to our entire community using all our tools, the budget book you have in front of you, and everything has been functioning because of this, of the print shop, and also all our communication tools. So I do want to shout out to the folks there, because they've been working nonstop and around the clock. And here are examples of all the things that the group has done, whether it's the print shop, you know, sending out bills during this time, websites, social media, everything has been just fantastic and even more. In fact, the efforts have been ongoing. Jan, next slide, please. Again, you know, please do come to me, I can give you some great numbers on the number of people we've reached out to, the efforts we've made in terms of language, the social media. The work has been just ongoing, behind the scenes, but really good. If you look at the small numbers underneath the logos of Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, et cetera, these are just indications of, you know, we keep track, how many people are coming to these sites, and these have been lifelines during the pandemic. So, you know, we're really working hard with our community. And if you go to the next slide, again, these are going in terms of websites and YouTube and external, internal platforms, and our goal is to be working, again, to keep our digital media going, to find ways, to create ways, to, you know, stay on top of technology, and work with, you know, social media, and basically to continue to work with our, you know, diverse and ever-changing communities, to find best ways to reach out to them and to hear from them, because communications is a very key and important tool. Organizational equity, inclusion, and development. This whole area is an area where the organizational program works to develop staff at all levels to bring their best to the city. Our focus is the coordination, formation, and support of cross-departmental teams, and these teams, they are provided with the strategic skills and training to support them so that they are most likely to bring positive change. A great example is that this coming Wednesday, we will be piloting the Equity Lens Workshop with two teams, and our equity consultant, Benita, will be providing both teams, the lean team as well as the community engagement team, and she will be training these teams on the Equity Lens. And once they've received the training in various aspects of engagement and facilitation, they will bring the Equity Lens Workshop, and this will help them, you know, bring this training and application of the training, such as an Equity Lens Workshop, and in the future, a climate lens to their efforts so that they can bring, you know, systemic process improvements. So these two slides basically show you how we've included and integrated organizational improvement throughout the city. Next slide, Jan. Another area where, again, we've just done an amazing job, and we're also, in some ways, a poster child for across the region, and this has been so important during COVID, is our work during emergency management. We've coordinated the response for multiple emergencies, whether it's been the 2019 winter storm, the flooding, and certainly, all through the COVID responses. We've had a major revision of the hazard mitigation plan, and we've also, again, with excellent work in emergency management, been able to apply for grants. And in terms of major repairs, we've initiated, you know, to work for the FEMA grant for $6.5 million, FEMA grant for the damage that we sustained in the 2020 flooding. Next slide. An area, again, where Renton is seen as having taken the lead is in, you know, completing the emergency management, a limited English proficiency plan, and we have translated our emergency management length messages into 18 languages that are spoken within our community. In terms of priorities, our priority is to test for a dam failure response for the Cedar River, and we're also planning to lead 75 staff and agencies for an integrated course at the FEMA Center next year, and we're looking at different plans and tools as part of our continuity of operations plan as we revise that and when we go forward. We're also looking at a major revision of our comprehensive emergency management plan, looking at ways that we can engage and include our volunteers in emergency preparedness, and then a big part of our focus on emergency management is to continue to emphasize equity and inclusion as we look at our emergency management services. And with that, I hope I've been within my time limit. I think I'm about five minutes over, Jan, but any questions, please, you can direct them to me, or Deb Needham, or Christine Rowland, or Benita.
Thank you, Priti. Thank you, Jan. Council members, if you have any questions or comments, would you please raise your hand? And Jan, if we can remove the share screen so I can see all the council members, that would be great. So... I don't see any hands. Am I right? Okay, I do have questions. So first, I think this is a typo, but in page 312 of your proposed preliminary budget, in the 21, 2022 goals, again, page 3/12 of the proposed budget, the executive area, in the 21, 2021, 2022 goals, you guys state, implement 2019-20 work plan, and I am assuming that you mean 2020-2022, and the whole thing, it states all 2019 in everything. The brief and review plan for 2019-12 event, I assume is 2021-12 event, and then it's a host 29 career fair, I assume is 2021 career fair. So the 2021, 2022 goals are reflected for 2019 instead of 2021 and 2022. Okay? Then I do have another question. In page 3/7, again, the executive preliminary budget, you guys are proposing in the organization, equity, and inclusion and development area, in 2021, a proposed budget of one full-time employee at $370,980, and in 2020-22, you propose one full-time employee at $327,460. Would you, Jan, be liable to send me what was the budget years prior to 2021, 2022 for this?
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you. Those are my questions for this. Anybody has any questions? Okay, I see none, Jan, so if we can move to the next department. Thank you, Priti. Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, council members. Okay, we'll move on to Chip Vincent with Community and Economic Development. Chip, I think you're muted.
It all started so well until then. Thank you, Council President Perez and council members. Chip Vincent here tonight to present the 2021-2020-22 budget for the Department of Community and Economic Development, but let me just start by saying what a year it's been, not like any other in my three decades-plus working in planning and community and economic development in the state of Washington. I feel like this budget is not just a chance for me to present the budget to you, but an opportunity as well to brag about the work that the staff and CED have done to accomplish the goals of the city council. They make my job, frankly, really easy here tonight. One of the things that I wanted to do as part of the budget tonight was organize it around the different work groups, so everybody got a chance to be able to have their say and for you to understand how it all works together as a department. But I have to apologize and admit, by the time we edited all the slides together last week, we were over 100 slides, so I apologize. I may move fast at times just because I'm trying to stay on schedule, but no, we can go back to anything that is of interest. One of the things that I would like to try to highlight tonight as I go through the budget presentation is areas related to how the department is implementing the city's business plan and the connections there, as well as the work, ongoing work of diversity and inclusion and equity that the department is doing, and highlight some examples of that. And then finally, talk a little bit about COVID, you know, and this time that we're living in and working in, and some of the lessons learned by the department as we work through this era of COVID. So with that as an opening, Jan, could you move on to the next slide? So the mission of the department is to enhance the vitality and livability of Renton community by promoting a prosperous and quality neighborhoods through economic development, sounder planning, and streamlined land use regulations. Jan? Jan? Okay. The department is organized into three distinct divisions, Development Services, Planning, Economic Development, and Long Range Planning, that are the unique work areas of the department. But I also want to acknowledge, and I'll touch on in the presentation tonight, the ongoing work of the Planning Commission, the City Center Plan Advisory Board, the Arts Commission, as well as the Benson Hill Community Plan Advisory Board. Jan? And also, and acknowledge at the very beginning, and this is our leadership team in CED, the supervisors and managers and directors, and frankly, the incredible people that I get to work with on a daily basis that frankly make my job really, really easy. I can't tell you how lucky and fortunate we all are to have such a dedicated group of leaders that are absolutely committed to advancing the business plan and agenda for the city council and the mayor for the city of Renton. Okay? The core services, when we talk about those distinct areas, is, I'll talk about administration in a second, but economic development is just nothing more, nothing less, but it's really about business recruitment and retention. Long-range planning has to deal with planning and policy development and code implementation for the city. The Planning Division deals with getting development applications ready for building permit processing. Development Services deals with our front counter, our intake, our inspections, and our plan review, and then finally, the staff support to the different boards and commissions we have in the department. Okay? So when we look at how we organize CED in terms of city service areas, we have six service areas in the city, and it's interesting that CED relates to four of them, and it's interesting to note that simply because for CED, we have more diversity in terms of professional occupations probably than any other department in the city when you consider the fact that we're comprised of engineers and planners and code enforcement staff and plan reviewers and building inspectors and, just to name, surveyors, just to name a few. It's not a wonder that we touch on so many of these service areas for It's not a wonder that we touch on so many of these service areas for the city. When you look at our budget of our fifty-eight and a half FTEs, which makes up the principal four of our budget, when we're looking at twenty twenty-one, we're almost at eleven million dollar budget for that year. And then for twenty twenty-two, we're eclipsing that to go to eleven million, three hundred thousand dollars after that. Jan? In terms of how we measure the work we do in community and economic development, this is simply just a sampling of some of the metrics that we use or performance measures to evaluate how we're doing within the department. This is just a cross-section, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these. I just wanted to highlight one that frankly, the first one you see here that frankly, not very happy with, but I wanted to show it in that it shows we're being realistic about how we measure our performance. Our two-week review of single families should be higher than that. It actually would have been higher this year for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. But we're working on a major program overhaul that I'll talk about later with our respect to our permit system. But this is just to give you a sample of the types of performance metrics that we continually evaluate to see how we're doing in carrying out the mission of our department. Jan? For the administration is to provide the leadership resources and regional influence to enable the department to meet its responsibilities in a manner that is responsive to the needs of the customers and consistent with the city's planning goals. Jan? So when I talk about the administration, what we're really talking about is myself here, is the head of the department. And one of the things that I like to point to in terms of how we provide that overall direction and support for the staff in the department is this one-page sheet that we put together a few years ago that was actually developed by the staff. Actually, I created a committee of staff to create this. And I just want to say I did not touch one word. I did not put a period in here. I didn't do anything. This is actually came from a staff work group, a cross-section of the department that identified what we want our workplace culture to be in CED. And it dealt with such issues as integrity and honesty and professionalism, reliability and initiative, customer service, mutual respect, how we handle conflict as well as open communication. In addition, it had expectations that staff had for the management in CED as well, all organized together under the mission of our department. Every employee in CED has this. It's one of the things that we hold each other all accountable to. Because if it's incumbent on myself or the leadership team to do this, it's going to be a lot harder than if all of the staff all hold each other accountable for this. And it's one of the things that's really important in terms of defining the culture of how we carry out the mission of the city council. Jan, next? So I'm going to start talking about the different work groups we have, beginning with the Economic Development Division. But one of the things that I did was I created these slides for all of our work groups because under this time of COVID, this is actually how we see each other now. It used to be around a conference room table or in a meeting somewhere. But actually, as you all know on the council, this is how we see each other now, much akin to the Brady Bunch, you know, seeing each other on screens. So this is our Economic Development Team. Jan? So for Economic Development, their mission is to enhance the vitality and livability of Renton by promoting a prosperous and diverse economy. Jan? And this identified two, I'm sorry, three different goals of the business plan that specifically relate to the ongoing work of the Economic Development Division to provide a safe, healthy, vibrant community, promote economic vitality, and strategically position Renton for the future. And finally, building an inclusive, informed city with equitable outcomes for all in the support of social, economic, and racial justice. Jan? So first, I'd like to just talk about some of the highlights of the work that's been accomplished and frankly is ongoing as well. Can't, we cannot count two hundred mil as an accomplishment yet, but a lot of work has gone into the fact that repurposing and selling off and revitalizing the old two hundred mil that's adjacent to the downtown library is an incredible economic opportunity and a place-making chance for the city to realize a vision that wouldn't normally be done. It has literally taken us almost a year and a half just to get to the purchase and sale agreement that's being advanced to city council with the terms and conditions for the redevelopment of that property, which is such an exciting opportunity for the city. Jan? In addition, we've completed some of the design and engineering for the streetscape improvements and wayfinding to be included a part of that as part of the Civic Core Action Plan and Vision. We, as you can tell now, if you go downtown, I was just down there last week to see the ongoing work. And this is going to be an incredible accomplishment, the conversion of the one-way couple into back-to-two-way. But really, the place-making, the making this downtown for people, not necessarily for automobiles, is one of the keys here. Jan? Also, our Economic Development Group successfully partnered with the Port of Seattle to develop a marketing campaign. They continued to enhancement of three state-of-the-art websites for downtown visitors and economic development in Renton, as well as continued to use Facebook and other social media platforms to advance economic development interests of the city. Jan? In addition, they had a digital ad word campaign in Renton, as well as YouTube channel presence to advance the media for economic development. Jan? We also strengthened the working relationship with the Downtown Renton Partnership, one of our key partnerships with all of the businesses downtown to advance a consistent economic development agenda to activate and create the live, vital, vibrant downtown that we want Downtown Renton to be. Jan? Also, in the accomplishments, I'm not going to go into all the details here, but the ongoing work partnering with the Renton Housing Authority to advance opportunities for affordable housing for people that are economically challenged in the Sunset area. Jan? This is one that I want to spend just a couple of minutes on here and because this is so important because, as the council knows, the Sunset area is our both ethnically most diverse area of the city as well as economically challenged in terms of poverty. So understanding those factors and the need for support for this incredibly incredible community that needs help. The city provided four hundred thousand dollars in funds, but it did a lot of the coordination with the Rent Housing Authority to repurpose the old Sunset Highlands Library into the Sunset Neighborhood Center. Along with, this is a LEED Silver Project, so it's really setting the new standard for environmental design and environmental quality. And our partners are in that. Our health point, St. Vincent de Paul Valley Cities Neighborhood House, Rent Housing Authority will provide services that actually opened this week here. And if you could see the picture down below, that's how it used to look on the left side when it was the old Renton Sunset Library. And now, after a three-point-four million dollar investment to provide the opportunities for all of our partners to be able to provide support services in the community, this is what it looks like now. Also, also, I'm sorry, Jan, other way. There you go. Okay, also, we partnered with the Rent Housing Authority and Homestead Community Land Trust to secure funding for brand-new Willow Crest Townhomes, which are going to be privately owned homes. This, one of the challenges that we've had in the Sunset area, along with the challenges of income, is the fact that most of the people in the Sunset area are renters. So this was really an opportunity to provide affordable homeownership to people as well. And we're really excited about this project. We started this in April of twenty twenty, and it's scheduled to be completed in twenty twenty-one. Also, we activated enhanced public buildings and civic spaces through acquisitions, storage, and presentation of the city's artifacts collected, including to date the most popular installation of Erasmus, the Rooftop Dragon, and contracting for the creation of the Rent Loop that is actually about to be installed here next month down on the corner of Second and Main. Jan? We worked to build and implement the rental registration program that was adopted by the council in twenty nineteen, and we've hired staff both in Finance Department, City, and CED to implement that program. But because of COVID and other issues we've discussed with council, we are frankly teeing that program up and plan on full implementation of that program beginning in twenty twenty-one. Jan? Additionally, in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, we provided incentives for multifamily property tax exemption, which is an economic way of incenting affordable housing. We created one hundred and seventy-four units, as well as fee waivers for fees for affordable housing, ninety-four units, as well as our bonus density program where we have, through bonus density provisions, we've actually created affordable homeownership for nine affordable units in three different projects in the city. And we also secured a hundred thousand dollar grant from the Department of Housing, or sorry, from Department of Commerce for our Housing Action Plan, five-year program focused on residential density and development. Jan? We conducted a Housing Action Plan and Community Engagement Needs Assessment to reflect the diverse voices and experiences of residents. And we've convened an advisory committee, targeted community engagement, as well as assessed the needs for housing based on race, ethnicity, and age-based metrics where possible. Again, trying to develop plans to meet the needs of the people who most need it. One of the things that we're really, really proud of, the work of the, ongoing work of the Arts Commission, which is a group I love to brag about, and that was the work that they did this year on the Black Lives Matter Art Walk that was launched in downtown Renton on September twenty, on twelfth. And can be enjoyed virtually through the city's website app or in person if you walk around downtown to view the art and videos in store windows. The tour will remain on the app through the end of the year for viewing. So we've got some, Jan, if you'll go on, we've got some examples of the free Black Lives Matter embroidery kits are available while some eyes laugh for pickup at Wildwood Creative. To add to the walk experience, the finished embroidery pieces can be returned and will be sewn together to create a community tapestry to weave together the powerful voices of those who stand together, the support of the fight for freedom, liberation, and justice. Jan? Here's some examples of some of the art on our Black Lives Matter Art Walk downtown. And we've received just a lot of positive feedback, and I don't know if you saw the article in the Renton Reporter, but just a lot of positive feedback from our Black Lives Matter Art Walk downtown and the artwork that's been produced. Under current initiatives and goals to continue to foster redevelopment of the two hundred mil that I talked about earlier, continue to implement the Civic Core Plan. Jan? Oops, to continue to work with SICO Development and the Landing and our partners looking at new development in and around the Landing, as well as support the progress of South Park moving forward and the redevelopment opportunities there for the old PSC site immediately adjacent to the South Park project. Jan? We will continue to utilize existing incentives to foster diverse array of increased affordable and market-raised housing opportunities. Affordable housing, as I've shared with the council previously, it's something we can't do by ourselves. To meet the housing affordability needs of our community, we need to have strong relationships and strong partnerships with the likes of Microsoft, Challenge Seattle, the Housing Development Consortium, King County, as well as many other private nonprofit organizations to provide for affordable housing in the community. In addition, we will continue to work with DEFCO to implement the Solar Master Plan for high-quality mixed-use redevelopment of the Greater Highland Shopping Center site. Jan? And we will coordinate CED's Nine-Member America Vista Core Project with four volunteers at the city CED Community Services, as well as other agencies. These Vista America volunteers have been an incredible asset for the department and other organizations we work with that brings that energy and vibrance and enthusiasm to the work they do carrying the city, as well as doing it on a very, very cost-effective basis given that these are America or Vista. Though there is compensation, it's a nominal stipend there for compensation. Jan? Again, back to arts and culture, we're going to consistently support the arts and culture programming and ambassadors that we have for the city of Renton, as well as advocate support for place-making art projects in downtown Sunset area and Benson Hill. Jan? Again, under arts and culture, we're going to continue to use the different social media platforms to advance the work of the Arts Commission and hope to bring people together, inspiring civic pride and neighborhood identity using art in a collaborative way and in collaboration as well with our neighborhood program. Jan? And we would like to expand the city's public art programs with diverse, a greater diversity of artists participating in the future. We're going to provide quarterly educational workshops, as well as topics such as grant writing for artists, as well as curate an art show and exhibit. Jan? And continue to implement the Sunset Area Revitalization Plan through the interdepartmental team. As the council knows, this has been one of the top priorities of the city to bring about the economic change and quality of living for the people of the Sunset area. And we do this not just in CED, but through collaboration with other departments. But secondly, is to simply say, you know, we really think about the Rent Housing Authority as another department in the city. And frankly, back to that teamship and collaboration, we could not be half as successful as we have been without the support of other departments and especially the Rent Housing Authority. Jan? Support the success in construction of market rate and affordable housing projects. We've got a number of different projects. I've touched on a couple of them. I will just, finally, though, we actually had the pre-construction meeting on the Sunset Terrace Apartments. That's the project that's going to go next to the Sunset Library. So finally, years later, that project is starting under construction soon. Next slide, Jan? And then, as I said previously, just continue the partnerships that we have in the city to advance the needs of our community. Jan? And this is actually a new project that the council has not seen before, but to assist RHA with the efforts to design and secure financing for the Sunset Garden Projects. It's a proposed senior veterans project, seventy-five rental units. It's a proposed senior veterans project, 75 rental units at the current headquarters at the site up on Sunset. Anyway, beautiful project, it's one that we haven't gotten too far down the road yet, but wanted the council to be aware that this is one of the exciting affordable housing projects that's being advanced by RHA in collaboration with CED and the city in the near future. Jan? And again, back to partnerships, to continue to work with the South King County Housing and Homeless Partnership, as well as with King County to advance access to affordable housing for all Renton residents and people in South King County. Jan? We will be finalizing the draft of the Housing Action Plan this upcoming year and bringing it to the council for adoption with a specific implementation strategy of actions the council can take over the next five years for affordable housing. Jan? So, moving from economic development to our long-range planning group, I will share with the council, I didn't realize it, but there's actually a background that you can get that's called Brady Bunch Blue. So, number of the slides use the Brady Bunch Blue, and this is our small but great team for long range in the way we see ourselves daily these days under COVID. Jan? So, the mission is to direct Renton's growth based on community values, promoting high quality of life for residents and prosperity for businesses through sound planning, zoning, development, while ensuring predictable outcomes for our customers. Jan? And there's really two goals of the business plan that relates to this work that we do in long-range planning, promoting a safe and healthy vibrant community, as well as supporting planned growth and influence decisions that foster environmental sustainability. Jan? So, this is just a sampling of some of the policy plan documents that long-range planning maintains and advances to the city council for their review, consideration, and approval that really set the policy direction, given the topic area for the city. Jan? One of the things that we've worked on this last year that I'm really excited to be able to share with the council at this time is the ongoing work that we've done around accessory dwelling units. This last year, we've been working very closely with Planning and Development Committee and the Planning Commission to create a set of what's called base plans for accessory dwelling units. The idea is that if we created base plans, that we could provide those over the counter for customers that would want to build a backyard cottage or an accessory dwelling unit, as we call it, not a very friendly term, but backyard cottage is frankly more reflective of what these are. But the idea was is to make it as easy as possible for people who own property in the city of Renton to advance and create accessory dwelling units, given the fact that it provides real, meaningful, affordable housing for people. It really provides equity in terms of maximizing access to infrastructure and opportunities where these units may be located, and it maximizes existing investment already made by the city in infrastructure in a way that encourages these to occur. But one of the things that we wanted to do was ensure that they're done in a way that adds value, quality, and character to the neighborhood and doesn't detract from it. So the thought was to create these model base plans, and you can see in the lower right corner, standard floor plan for this one unit, which is a two-bedroom, one-bath, 650-square-foot unit. But on the left, with that same floor plan, you can see three different versions of the Victorian, the ranch, and the craftsman of how they could be implemented based on the different type of structures that people have. So we really want these to be compatible and coexist nicely with the primary residents to be able to match up as closely as possible with not introducing a new urban design element into neighborhoods that frankly could be not supported by the neighborhoods. The idea here is that by the city doing this work, we have front-loaded the cost of the design, the engineering, as well as the energy review. So with all of that done, we hope to be able to provide these across the counter for people absolutely free of charge. And when you look at the cost of development, typically between the fee structure as well as the design and engineering work, it could make up close to 20% of the budget for an accessory dwelling unit or any new development, frankly, as far as that goes. So we're really trying to advance a comprehensive program. This is just an example, Jan, if you go to the next slide. Here's another one that we think will be a big winner. This is a carriage house over a garage where somebody wants to build a garage, they can have a pre-approved design for a carriage unit that would be over the garage. This is two bedrooms, one bath, and 642 square foot over a 650 square foot garage. But again, all the design work has been done upfront, there's very little plan review involved from the city side, and we're trying to make these as easy and financially possible for citizens to be able to do these. I've just showed a couple of examples here, but we've actually have a little over 20 different designs that we're going to put together in the catalog, and we're finishing up that work right now with the Planning and Development Committee. Jan? In addition, the ongoing work and advanced planning or long-range planning has to do with the fact that we've held over 30 meetings and 13 public hearings with our Planning Commission, we've adopted policies and regs, 26 different docket items, we just had a full agenda today at the Planning and Development Committee, dealing with our year-end, completing the work that we started earlier in the year, some of these standards that are important that we've adopted this year relate to street trees, open space requirements, and regulations for quality mixed-use development. One of the things that we haven't talked about, and I will tell you, I am sincerely grateful that we have not talked about it, because when I started with the city in Renton in 2008, it is the hottest topic we dealt with back then, and that was the adoption of the Shoreline Master Program. And when it was adopted in 2010 by the city council, it was on a four-three vote, and I will tell you, I'm not, I wasn't sure we had the fourth vote during that night to move with that on. Highly contentious, highly controversial. I am so grateful for the work of Vanessa Dolby and Paul Hints and Angie Mathias and Long Range Group advancing this, really worked with the community this time, and frankly, very little negative public reaction to the work we did getting that Shoreline Master Program adopted, as well as our work with Public Works Department getting and adopting the firm app that helps Renton residents that are in flood areas get flood insurance. Jan? Next one, Jan? And so, the current initiatives and goals for long-range planning is continue to work with the council and the commission to revise and refine the cut plan and development regulations. One of the things that I wanted to share with you is that the shift to remote hearings has increased public participation. So looking forward and moving out of COVID, we want to figure out how we can provide a bridge to continue to be able to engage the public more broadly, because this makes it easier for them to participate in our processes and programs, as well as, we have to obviously do that within a legal framework as well. Jan? So our Planning Commission, this, I spoke of all those public hearings and 30-plus meetings they can did over the last year, I just want to take a moment to recognize the heroic efforts of these individuals and the work that they did advancing their recommendations to the city council this year. Just an incredibly gifted group of professionals in their own right with a broad array and diversity of backgrounds, as well as a diversity of people as well, and just incredible group. And I just wanted to give a shout out and just note that one of our leaders of our group, who's one of the tenured people, Kevin Poole, was not shown in the photos. So bummer, when we took the photo last Wednesday night, Kevin wasn't there, so sorry, Kevin. Jan? So, current initiatives and goals, to continue to support our boards, to continue to refine our development regulations, as well as begin to get ready for the update to the city's comprehensive plan. One of the things that we're going to do is really put this update of all the elements in the comprehensive plan to the city's new equity lens, to make sure that we are looking at equity in all aspects of creating the plan for the succeeding 20 years worth of growth the city is planning for in the comprehensive plan. It honestly doesn't seem like we just adopted the last update in 2015, it just seems like it was yesterday to me, but we're about ready to start the next cycle here again with ratification 2023 on 2024 timeline, but it takes that long to do the work. Jan? And so, now we've got the Brady Bunch Blue background, here's our current planning group. Jan? And the current planning group directs Renton's growth based on community values, high quality of life for residents, through sound planning, zoning, and customers. One goal of the business plan that relates to this is support of plan growth to influence positions and foster environmental sustainability. Jan? So, a lot of work goes through in the current planning group. They conducted 145 redevelopment meetings and 248 land use applicants, all within the performance timelines, continued to excel in providing customer service, assisted almost 367 customers per month with questions in our permit center, and transformed our land use permitting department into a virtual permit center in two weeks. This is one of the frankly Herculean efforts of the department in collaboration with HR and finance and IT to be able to, when the time COVID was declared, two weeks after that, we were completely operational in terms of providing support to keeping businesses and development going in Renton. And we refined the processes for virtual public hearings as a result. We'll continue to engage in large-scale projects, just a few, the big ones coming up, the Solar Project, the Highland Shopping Center Top Golf is getting really close to breaking ground, we had a pre-construction meeting with them two weeks ago, Family First Community Center and the Cedar River Apartments, commonly known as Seal Stone Way site there. Provide customer service in a high quality and provide high-quality development review and reduce impacts to the community and ensure new development adds value, quality, and character to the city, as I indicated. So, we've got some metrics here, not going to spend a lot of time, but you can see the dip we had, you know, around COVID time and the fact that business is getting back to usual here. Jan? Also, land use applications accepted had kind of a weird dip there at the end of July there, but it's coming back up, not a big sample size here, so not a lot of good, but I want you to know that we track this information in terms of rightsizing our organization and making sure that we have all the data so we can make informed decisions. Jan? Public records requests, this gives you a sampling, we spent incredible amount of time, as you might imagine, CED is really the clearinghouse for real estate companies, land title companies, savings and loans, other institutional organizations that really rely on a lot of the land use planning and entitlement and building permit and code compliance information we have in the city. Jan? The hearing examiner is well part of the department, we worked with him, he conducted 41 hearings. We actually were the lead in King County in virtual public hearings under COVID. In fact, we moved so quickly and we had a great working relationship with the city attorney's office and our hearing examiner, frankly, became the model for King County and other cities to figure out how to conduct virtual public hearings and do it through virtual processes in the time of COVID. Jan? Development, engineering, and plan review. Jan? This is one of the pictures that I frankly love, and because this is not necessarily how we see the building inspectors, but under COVID, we very quickly converted all of the building inspectors' vehicles to their offices. We got them up to the shops, we get them set up like the police cars with the technology and the apparatus so that they could conduct all of their business without ever having to come into City Hall, and HR approved them taking their vehicles home as well. So really quick, these are what we call the new offices for our development, engineering inspectors, as well as for our building inspectors. Jan? So, accomplishments, a lot of work by this group in terms of the 2,228 issued civil permits in within the budget cycle, improved valuation of 14.6 million, worked really closely with our partners in public works and our franchises, and ensured timely inspection for the capital assets that are being advanced, and there's a better graphic coming up here that reflects this. Current initiatives and goals is to meet or exceed the departmental goals for timely review of public work, plan review, construction permits, land use, pre-application submittals, as well as ensure timely and thorough inspections of all public works and private development projects, and provide inspection-related documentation for projects to ensure in the compliance and the grant writing and reporting requirements, because so many of our public projects rely on grants, the reporting of the inspections is really important. This is the slide I was referring to that shows the public works customer service growth over time. Jan? And as well, we organize our development, engineering, public works group into these five different categories, so when you look at the 2,000-plus permits that were issued, you can see how they're organized between domestic water, stormwater, sanitary sewer, franchises, and street construction. Jan? This is a really, really important slide to me, because this aggregates the private investment in terms of assessed valuation of site improvements. So you can see that when we evaluate all of the projects, it's almost $15 million of investment going on in our community with our public works, development, engineering projects. When broken out, you can see how it breaks out by different categories in this pie chart. Jan? And then, moving on to property and technical services, here's our group that provided the support, thank Jan, go ahead. Supplied the transition from my building permit to Renton Permitting Portal, provided the transition to our electronic plan review and electronic planning, created an electronic roadmap for the conversion of our software system, and frankly, found a lot of creative solutions to provide CED data electronically to the public as well as to staff. Jan? So additionally, they provide GIS mapping as well as project management for the electronic plan submittal. Jan? And this is an example of what we call our CED electronic roadmap in terms of where we are and the different initiatives we are to be able to go into this virtual world. I was sharing with colleagues recently that we were very lucky, that we were really working our way towards electronic plan review and submittal well before COVID hit. That's one of the things that allowed us to be able to transition so quickly to being able to provide all of the support that all of our customers expect, but do it in a different way electronically than we've ever done before. Jan? And our building inspection group, this is This is group of building inspectors without their, not in front of their cars, as well as, go ahead, Jan. As well as this is our permitting and plan review group that continue to do their jobs, but this is how we see them on a daily basis. Jan? For them, the same mission statement here, trying to create and maintain a safe and pleasant physical environment, ensuring compliance with codes, land use regulations, and assisting public and development community through regulatory processes. Really two missions of the business plan that relate to this meet service demands, provide higher quality customer service, as well as support plan growth and influence decisions to foster environmental sustainability. Jan? So in terms of accomplishments, we issued 10,339 permits. And this is one of the amazing numbers that when you look at all of those permits, what the value of that investment is in the city, and it's over $1 billion, $1,200 million and change in terms of investment, which is really amazing investment back into our community. We continue to provide single-family plan reviews, while commercial review each month, fairly high numbers there as well as process 72 inspections per day. Jan? We want to strive to meet and exceed the goals and streamline the permitting process using our new software system. Jan? And this is data that I get every week showing our building permit inspections. You can see some of the dips, the valleys there, some of the peaks in terms of our workload for our building inspectors who do an amazing amount of work on a daily basis. Jan? And then code compliance. These are our people working in code compliance, and it's such an important issue for the city council. They conducted complaint-based inspections from private citizens. They follow up. Jan, could you go to the next one? So they work to meet or exceed the departmental goals for timely resolution for code compliance. One of the things that more and more we work closely with the police department, especially since the graffiti maintenance coordinator position is no longer there. So we're working closely with them to, here's some examples. This is what really tells the story. If you look at the pictures on the left, it's how this residential structure looked previously. And then on the right is how it looks after code compliance. Jan? Jan, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Another example of before and after code compliance. Jan? Oh, Jan was there, I'm sorry. So this shows the, yes, there's one more. So and here's one more example of overrun vegetation and the before and after after code compliance. Just a few, the handful of pictures of the work this group does. Number of cases closed, you can see along the bottom axis the number of cases that we get from 20, the beginning of 2019 to the end of 2019. Next. Then you can see from the beginning of 2020 to date, to the end of September, what our case files look like. Next. And then you can now see them combined in terms of code compliance. Okay, Jan? Okay, the last thing I wanted to share with you is just, you know, what does all this mean if it doesn't result in high-quality projects for the community? I just wanted to highlight some examples of the great projects that our staff collectively as a team have worked on, beginning with the Sonic Drive-In. You will not see a Sonic Drive-In that looks like this in any other community before this. This was designed to be a pedestrian-oriented, not auto-oriented Sonic, although it has auto orientation on the back. It has the big pedestrian plaza, outdoor seating, landscaping along the Rainier Avenue corridor to make it more of an experience rather than just something, rather than just your national brand drive-through. I will tell you, it took a lot of work to get here with Sonic. They were so pleased with the results and the public acceptance of this. This is now the template that they're using in a number of other communities as well. Jan? As well, the work with our, one of our major partners in the city is Valley Medical, the work with them with their garage and their new medical office building that's going up right now. And we're TCO, I'm sorry, Temporary Certificate of Occupancy for this building. Jan? And as well, the Residence Inn that's just got completed down on Lake Washington Boulevard as well. That adds the value, and again, a Residence Inn not like any that you'll see in any other community elsewhere, but you may see coming forward. Because again, had to work with them very hard, but it was very successful. And actually, they liked the result and the outcome and are considering it in other communities as well. Jan? And then one that I'm especially proud of is the work of our staff working with Merrill Gardens for the expansion in downtown. Just incredible, incredible new asset that provides much-needed senior housing support with 24 memory care units in common areas as an extension of Merrill Gardens. Jan? And storage one, we, you know, this is, gosh, this one. You know, everybody knows what a storage facility looks like. And I will tell you, this is one I think any community would be proud to have a self-storage unit in their community if it looked like this. Our staff did an incredible job working with the developer to actually, to create a self-storage facility that's not an ICE OR, but frankly, an urban asset and amenity. Jan? As well as the Renton Commons, commonly known as the Lehigh Project down on Whitworth Downtown, providing affordable housing. Again, back to this partnerships I mentioned earlier, working with Lehigh to provide a high-quality, affordable housing project for the lowest-income people in our community, in that range of 0% to 30% average area meeting income. The reason I like to highlight this is just because people are poor doesn't mean they don't deserve high-quality, affordable living. And this is one of the best examples of providing quality design, quality construction housing for the most vulnerable economically in our community. Jan? And Sunset Court Apartments, a recent project that was just completed up in the Highlands, not about a block away from our new Sunset Park. Jan? Southport, you're all familiar with that and coming along very nicely on that project. Jan? As well as some smaller-scale projects like Renton Dental. You know, high-quality construction, great urban design, pedestrian presence up on the streetscape. Really, what we're really trying to emphasize here with a lot of these is creating not an auto-oriented environment, but pedestrian accessible for walking for people so they don't have to get their cars and drive everywhere. And I hope this exemplifies that kind of redevelopment that we're looking for in the city. Jan? Questions? I'm sorry, I went long. That was over 100 slides in a very short period of time. But thank you very, very much for your indulgence. Like I said, a lot to be proud of with the group that I get to work with every day. And I hope in this you see that they're advancing the will and the vision of the Renton City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Council members, do you have any questions? Council member O'Halloran?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chip. I just wanted to make a comment about the update to the comprehensive plan that we're going to start working on next year, I think. And that is, that I know that we have not yet developed a climate lens, but I want to make sure that as we go through that update to the comprehensive plan, that that is the forethought in our mind as we're doing that, as well as the equity lens.
Oh, I should have mentioned that council member O'Halloran. That is absolutely going to be one of the cornerstones of our reevaluation of our growth plan for the future.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you, Council member O'Halloran. Council member Benedetti?
Thank you. Lowering my hand there. And to Councilmember O'Halloran's point, I'm looking at page three, I'm sorry, section three, page 53. And that is top bullet where, under the 21, 22 goals, they talk about the amending of the comprehensive plan. There's a typo in that bullet. And I'm wondering if we might put the piece about the equity lens and the climate lens in that sentence so that it's codified in the budget itself.
Thank you, Councilmember Benedetti. Thanks for, first off, thanks for catching the typo, but that's a great recommendation as well.
Thank you. And I wish to commend Councilmember McIrvin for finding the Brady Bunch Blue so fast.
Thank you, Councilmember Benedetti. Thank you, Chip. And any more questions, council members? Council member Van?
Yes, I just have a comment. Thank you, Chip, for the presentation. And I very much appreciate the note that you made. Very, I very much appreciate it as far as the housing program for elderly and veterans. So thank you. Looking forward to that.
Okay, thank you. We are too.
And you, Councilmember Van, any more questions? Chip, I really want to appreciate your presentation. I always enjoy your presentations. Your team is so creative that putting a face behind all the work that is done is just amazing. I really, really like the Brady Bunch team. And this shows your leadership as well as the creative of creativity of your staff. I have two questions and just refresh my memory. I remember that in the last biennial budget, we approved two more FTEs for code enforcement.
Yes.
At the time, so tell me what happened.
So actually, one of those FTEs is actually being held in abeyance simply because we did not implement the rental registration program this year. The code compliance position was intended to provide that inspection for the healthy housing or rental registration program. But because of under COVID, that we, we actually decided to slow that program down and to continue with public outreach for the balance of 2020 and actually start the program in 2021. So we haven't, we will not be filling that vacant code compliance position created by that until 2021, when we actually roll out the whole program. The other position is actually one that's being held in abeyance right now as we work through some restructuring of how we do our code compliance work in CED. So I hate to use the term reorganizations, but we're trying to move resources around to basically put the resources where there's the greatest need. And we, if we continue to see a dip in building inspections, we want to be able to, and have been using our building inspectors to provide for code compliance reviews as well. So it's providing some flexibility as well. And then the last piece is, we basically have agreed under COVID that any vacant positions that we had in the department, that we put a freeze on those through the balance of the year to generate the salary savings necessary to help balance out the economic downturn that we have in the $15 million of revenue lost to the city. So that's where we are with respect to those two positions. Council President Perez?
Thank you, Chip. Council member Perez?
Thank you, Madam President. Hey, Chip. So with the rental registration program, when do you expect, what quarter of 2021 do you expect that to launch? Do you expect it to be first quarter, second quarter?
So I will, if anyone, so I don't mean to sound cheeky when I say this at all, but if somebody could tell me when life is going to get back to normal, I will have a better response. We were actually absolutely ready to roll out the program earlier this year. And in discussion with the mayor and council members, we said, you know what, this, under COVID, this is not the right time to add additional permitting and compliance issues for landlords. There's enough things that are going on that are very challenging for landlords right now. So let's just continue to do the public information and public outreach and the engagement and create the business licensing part, all of which we've done. But we frankly did not want to do that until the governor's order had been pulled back on the ability for the landlords to basically terminate lease agreements for lack of payment with their tenants, because there's just so much going on with landlords right now related to COVID that we did not want to layer this on top of it. So I will tell you, our plan right now is, to answer your question directly, is the first quarter of the year to roll this out. We are all positioned and ready. We just are looking for things to look a little bit more like normal again before we do.
Madam President, I have a quick follow-up. And so, and I think I know the answer to this, but I'm asking it because I had a resident ask me this question. They are dealing with a landlord that won't fix the mold in their home.
Oh, goodness.
And so would you suggest that I have them get in touch with code compliance? Or what would you suggest?
For this, send them to me. That is both, we can deal with this either in code compliance, but frankly, back to Council President Perez. This is the kind of thing, if we have mold, I will send a building inspector out to deal with, rather than code compliance to deal with the situation. We are more than happy, if any of you other council members have the circumstances, situation where you have members of the community that have these issues, please contact, have them contact me or anybody in our development services. We will get a building inspector. We just need the person to invite us into the home though. That's the key, is that they have to invite us into the home to be able to perform the inspection. And then we will reach out to the landlord and be their agent for them.
Thank you, Chip, and thank you for the follow-up, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Perez. Councilmember O'Halloran?
Yes, thank you. Chip, back to code compliance. You and I had a conversation earlier this year about, and it's in the budget document, about revisiting complaint addresses within a year to make sure that the property owners are still in compliance. And we had discussed very briefly the idea of not just a one-year kind of a look-back period, but revisiting those properties that have multiple complaints or what I think I refer to as repeat offenders. And I know that this was quite a bit earlier in the year and the world has changed since then. But has, is there any thought about revisiting repeat offenders?
Short answer, absolutely. And in fact, we are already doing it. We actually, once, and I hate to call it a recidivism rate, but we actually have one with respect to code compliance issues. And once you get on the list, we actually will do a follow-up to make sure there's compliance. Once you go on twice, you actually go onto a map that we call our hot list in CED. And our CED staff, once you have the same violation twice, you go on the hot list. And then we will continue to monitor the property for compliance.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Halloran. Council member Benedetti?
Thank you so much. Chip, I just wanted to point out the work particularly on page three, pages 48 and 49, that outlines what is being done in the efforts of affordable housing and community development. It's particularly, I mean, this is ambitious stuff. And if we can accomplish it in the two years, we're going to make some incredible inroads in our neighborhoods and really be able to support affordable housing in a way that's really just incredible. I'm just looking at this, there's a lot here. I wanted to just be sure that it isn't a typo on the third bullet down under 21, 22 goals. Do you really expect to complete the installation of the Wayfinding Plan by 2020, the end of this year? Or was that a typo?
No, we actually plan on getting that. What we're doing right now, Councilmember Benedetti, is we are tracking with Public Works construction of Wells and Williams and Second and Third Intersections. And as those projects come online, we are actually, is putting all the wayfinding in. We've actually already gone out to contract for all the signs. And we're just doing the installation as part of these large Public Works projects downtown. There are, that's an overstatement, though. There are a few that won't be done within that timeline, but the vast majority of them will be.
Okay. Yeah, I just, not having seen much go up, and it's October, I wasn't sure that you'd be able to reach this December goal. So, I was wondering if that was a typo. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be 2021, and it's going to go in accordance with, you see, I can't wait for you all to see all the street furniture that we've bought that's up at the shops right now, and the planters, and benches, and trash receptacles, and the wayfinding signs that we all are just waiting for these new projects for Wells, Williams, Second, and Third to all be done so we can do the fun stuff.
Thank you, Councilmember Benedetti. Seeing that we don't have other questions, I have more questions, Chip, if may I. First of all, I want to thank you and appreciate the fact that you added your presentation, the request of Councilmember Benedetti for last week, to mention exactly what part of the business plan were you addressing in your budget. I appreciate the extra effort. That to us to you and your team again. Now, you don't have to respond to this question if you don't know it, right? You can send it to me later. But in your department, I will say, page, is subsection three, page 44. In your department, the largest increase from 2020 to 2021 is in economic development at 16.3%. What's the driver of the increase?
Let me get back to you on that, Council President Perez.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else has more questions or comments? Seeing on, once again, I really want to appreciate your presentation. Chip was a great presentation. A lot of information that is needed. And I will pass the microphone again to Jan.
Great. Okay, well, just thank you all so much, and thank you for your continued support and direction. We love working for you. Make our jobs easy in CED. Thank you.
Great. Next, we have Martin Pastoucha with Public Works, and I will share his presentation.
Good afternoon, Council President Perez and members of the City Council. I'm here today to present an overview of the fiscal year 2021, 2022 Public Works budget. It is a budget that focuses on our core responsibilities of service and investment in our transportation utility infrastructure. So, the organization of Public Works, as much as you've seen before, with the one change is the reorganization of the airport as a, from a section in the Transportation Division to now a division within Public Works. Appreciate your approval of that earlier this year. Next. As you can see from looking at our budget, our positions are relatively stable from 2019 to 2020. Our resources are dedicated mobility, the Airport and Transportation Division, and maintenance and service staff, utilities, environment. We cover water, wastewater, surface water, and solid waste, and internal support of fleet maintenance and fleet acquisitions. One of the things you'll see, you'll notice, I'm sorry, Jan, you can go back. One of the things you'll notice is in the second year of our capital expenditures, you'll see a large amount in 2022 in capital expenditures and utilities environment. This is really due to some large construction projects, which will be under construction at that time. Next. So, the changes in our budget, the impact of services we deliver today. The core services in the Airport Division are expected to be maintained. However, our current workload has been redistributed to other department staff to accommodate to current vacancies. So, we're picking up some of the administrative work in the Director's Division office while we wait for the filling of the Airport Director, and then we have an Admin Secretary. So, that will, those two vacancies will continue into probably early 2021. Well, the Airport Director hopefully should be on board by the start of 2021, but we know the Admin Secretary will go a little longer. In our Maintenance Services Division, that our service levels there will be impacted by, due to the eight vacancies that are expected to be held open till at least mid-2021. As Chip had indicated earlier, we're holding positions open that have become vacant as a result of the budget. And there are some that have just recently become vacant that we'll need to fill in some of the leadership roles, such as our manager of our water and surface water section. So, in terms of that, we'll also see some other vacancies. However, we will try the best of our ability to continue to deliver our service levels as we have in the past. But again, we expect that to be probably open until mid-21, 21, by the time we finish recruitment and get everybody on board after the 2021 budget begins. We don't expect any impact to our emergencies. However, inclement weather and regular prevented maintenance could experience some delays responses. Street maintenance will continue to strive to help preserve our pavement level, I said our paving condition index of approximately 70, although it's dropped down a little bit from them in 2019. In addition, our service levels in our Transportation System Division will also be impacted due to our lower revenues for capital projects, such as our yearly overlay project and arterial overlay projects. Our staffing levels and project workload will also limit our ability to take on new projects and programs. We've got a lot of work going on there now, and it's been, impacts our ability to take on a lot of new stuff. We currently, in our vacancies, as I said, we have eight positions in our maintenance division. We have two positions in our Transportation Division, and one position in our Utility Service System Division, as well as the two in the airport. So, we've got a few vacancies that we're going to work on filling some of them, and some of them will wait till beginning of 2021. Next, please. In addition, providing our core services in a responsible, professional manner, goals in 2021 include: Support the city in safe, healthy, vibrant community. Regulatory and standards of care, maintaining those. Support plan growth and influence decisions that foster environmental sustainability. How can we, how do we improve upon our existing sustainability practices to foster innovation and incorporate best management practices in our capital construction? So, one of the things we've started our conversation with in Public Works this year is to take a look at sustainability rating systems and processes and how we can incorporate some of those into our infrastructure projects to both document and quantify the sustainability aspects of these projects as we move them going forward. Provide support in our building an exclusive and informed city with equitable outcomes for all in support of social, economical, and racial justice. A lot of this has to do with our outreach efforts in regards to our publications from our utilities, our brochures and things that we do in multiple languages in regards to solid waste, in the water and wastewater. They're put together in multiple languages. Our flyers are done in multiple languages when we meet with residents in neighborhoods, well, when we will in the future. And make sure we go out to their neighborhoods to try and have them in an area where we want the population involved. We'll have staff who can speak multiple languages as part of those outreach efforts as well. And then, support the city to meet our service demands, provide high-quality customer service, and design and construct infrastructure in a financially responsible manner while sensitive to the community and the environmental impacts on both short-term and long-term. Talking about, back to our development of infrastructure that has an environmental sustainability module built into it to account for that as well as document those efforts. Next. I'm missing something here. Jan, did you go too far? Yes, nope, I guess next one, sorry, my mistake. So, our core mission in Public Works is really to manage and maintain the utility and transportation systems in a skillful, professional, and caring manner. Our core services include the belts built to maintain streets and sidewalks, belt maintain the water, wastewater, and surface water utility infrastructure, including pipelines and pumps and treatment facilities, and then coordinate the collection of garbage and operate the airport and the city's vehicle fleet. Next. So, in addition, provide our car services. So, we incorporate the other items in here and provide a safe and healthy vibrant community in terms of regulatory requirements and ensuring the health and safety of our residents. Support the city's economic development priorities. Support grand plan growth and influence decisions that foster environmental sustainability. That's done in working with our partners in community economic development. Provide support in building an exclusive and informed city with equal outcomes for all in support of social, economical, racial justice. Support the city to meet service demands, provide high-quality customer service, and design and construct infrastructure in a financially responsible manner while sensitive to the community and the environment impacts both short-term and long-term. Next. So, these are our performance, some of our performance metrics. The city, while these performance indicators show some of our past metrics, I think one of the things I'd like to do is, as we go forward the next year, is we'll take a look at working on some of our metrics to maybe more quant, be able to highly, better quantify the work that we do in order to give you a perspective on how much we do and how that impacts the community on a regular basis. Next. So, these are statistics. One of the metrics has been our paving condition index. And what this, which generally has a goal of 70. What this shows you is our breakdown of our paving condition index in 2018 based upon the various planning areas of the city. As you can see, one of the things we're going, one of the efforts we're going to need to work on is to invest more in our street infrastructure and maintain, street maintenance to maintain this file of infrastructure. You can see a lot of our areas are in four, fair, poor, and very poor condition. We have a smaller number in good and satisfactory conditions. And one of the things we need to make sure is we make the investment to keep those areas and keep our paving condition index from dropping below 70. As of 2019, our last review of our PCI, it came in at 67. So, as you can see, this chart illustrates the paving condition index in planning area and illustrates the level of future investment to keep the, that we're going to do, need to make in order to keep pace with the deterioration of our transportation infrastructure. Next. What this shows is our statistics of our streets with existing sidewalks. And local really is, equates to our neighborhood sidewalks. Essentially, 225 miles of residential streets, 80 miles that have no sidewalk, 40 miles that have sidewalk on one side of the street, and 105 miles sidewalk on both sides of the street. And while that's, that's not great, it does show a level of effort. A lot of this is a result of annexations that occurred because our standards are certainly not those, are a little higher than those comparable to county. And so, those are some of the areas. Some of these will be rural areas that don't wish to have sidewalks or curb and gutter. But certainly, there are areas where we need to make some improvements and higher investment in our sidewalks. As you can see, our collectors, our minor arterials, our major arterials have a larger percentage of sidewalks covered in those areas. But it's really the local streets where we have the biggest deficit in our name, sidewalks. Next. Some of our other statistics to illustrate the size of the infrastructure maintained, the center lines, our lane miles, which is essentially how many lanes. Well, we have 321 miles of center line. Double that for two lanes on each side of the street, you'd end up with 753. Some streets are larger, three mile, or three lanes in each direction. So, that's what the lane miles mean. The lane miles of pavement markings, we have 450 miles of pavement markings. Number of street signs, we have over 15,000 street signs, over 4,900 city-owned streetlights that our crews maintain, 135 signalized intersections that our crews maintain, eight miles valleys, and 87 flashing beacons. And this number of street signs does not include the street name signs. Those are only the regulatory and advisory signs that exist. In regards to the airport, our airport is 170 acres in size. The runway length is 5,382 feet. We have 246 aircraft based at the airport. Based on our 2018 activities, we had over 145,811 operations. Operations include takeoffs and landings. And the number of Boeing 737 commercial aircrafts in operations in 2017 was 561. This is before the 737 grounding and the COVID-19 impacts of the airline industry. So, certainly, those statistics for 2020 are, will be certainly much greatly reduced from that. Next. Our utility statistics, you can see the number of accounts for each of our four utilities. Some accounts are larger than others, meaning surface water uncovers all accounts in the city. Some of our water and wastewater accounts are held by smaller utility districts that provide service to those areas. Generally, those are in areas of annexation. And solid waste accounts include a number of accounts because of businesses, sometimes multiple buildings. I mean, a building that allows multiple tenants there, so separate trash services. Our surface area square miles, you can see in the solid waste and surface, it covers the entire city. In water, we have 17, we cover 17.25 square miles of the city. Providing service to, there's another essentially eight miles that are provided by other utilities. In wastewater, we have 18.8 miles inside the city, and then we provide service to 3.3 miles of entities outside the service area. That's because the county has designated our utility, wastewater utility, as a utility choice in certain areas, which means that developers going in, building those areas have to connect to our wastewater system. They pay their fair share to buy into the system as well as their connection fees. Our total water sales were over 2 million gallons of water. You can see the size of the pipelines. We have a large number of pipelines, both in our water, wastewater, and surface water areas. Large numbers of wells, nine wells, one spring, 12 reservoirs, 12 pump stations, 38 pumps, two treatment facilities, 46 pressure-reducing valves, 3,818 fire hydrants, and 11,894 valves. And those valves are what allows us to turn the water off at a particular intersection or a particular pipeline in order, if we have a main break, in order to isolate that and allow our folks to get in there and maintain it. So, exercising those valves on a regular basis is one of the important activities of our maintenance crews. Wastewater, you can see 247 miles of pipe, 20 lift stations, 5.2 miles of forced mains, which is when the lift stations pump the water up and moves it into, to the point in time where it gets into a gravity feed. But it takes 5.2 miles of pipeline to do that. We have 6,283 maintenance access structures or manholes, personal holes, as we call them. And then, our surface water utility, we have 286 miles of pipeline, 435 different facilities, 17,000 catch basins, and three pump stations. And you can see in the solid waste, we've got containers, we have over 24,000 residential containers that are served by our partners at Republic Services, our contractor, 518 multifamily containers, 16 multifamily roll-off containers, and over 1,323 commercial accounts and 102 commercial roll-off containers. As you can see, our annual garbage collection includes 40, over 44,000 tons of garbage, As you can see, our, our annual garbage collection includes forty, over forty-four thousand tons of garbage, over twenty-seven thousand recyclables and organics. Our recycle rate is at sixty-seven, our commercial rate is at fourteen-five, and overall we're at thirty-eight percent. So there's some areas we need to work on in our commercial and multifamily programs, and they began doing that this last year, pre-pandemic. They're still doing some pilot areas, but in order to expand that further, we need to continue to study these pilots and see some of the obstacles that that exist in terms of preventing a larger scale rollout for a multifamily collection program. Next. So looking back, over nineteen twenty, the fiscal year, you can see the airport division, they completed some important projects. A design of a lift station for the northwest end of the airport that'll be under construction here shortly. We've completed the design of an airport tower remodel, we're now in the process of searching for funding for that. We applied for a grant through FEMA from the BIC Brick Program. We were notified that we were considered to move into the second round, which is good. So we're some, we're still on, hoping that we are able to acquire some funds for the airport title remodel because no longer meets the seismic requirements. I've completed the driveline patch repairs. I completed installation of city fiber to the maintenance building. We've selected a consultant for our FEMA dredging project. This was a project that was approved by FEMA for the dredging of the mouth of the Cedar River as it enters into Lake Washington, the removal debris around there and the ramp for the seaplane base. And then we completed the C, LED lighting project along the Cedar River Trail. Next. So currently in the, looking back, we've done the downtown utility infrastructure improvement, the design work for that. We're either in, these projects were either in the design and permitting phase. The Highlands four thirty-five zone, six point three million dollar reservoir, reservoir project. The twelfth street transmission lane that goes along with the Highland Reservoir. Duval Avenue Water Main Improvement, which is working with our street improvement project in that area. The Thunder Hills Sewer Interceptor Rehabilitation Project. Sixteen Street Jefferson Street Stormwater Green Connections and Highland Water System Improvement Projects. The Heather Downs Detention Facility, Mattson Creek Improvements, it's a flood, flood reduction project. Southeast one seventy-second and one twenty-fifth Avenue North Storm System Improvements. The Duval Avenue Northeast Water Main Improvement Project and the I four oh five Washed Up Project Utility Relocation Coordination is part of the BRT project. If you'll notice there, it's at least one, two, three, four projects that were funded with grants that allowed us to move forward with this important work. Next. So completed plans, programs and regulatory requirements. Let's see the solid waste organics and the garbage recycling program, the community solid waste prevention campaign. The multifamily recycling education outreach program, which is a pilot. Our water system plan, the update regulatory agency review, I'm currently going through that now. The adoption of our new flood pain map and National Flood Improvement Program Development Standards. As Chip had alluded to earlier, with CED on those things, which allowed our residents to see a reduced rate in some of their stormwater, some of their flood insurance programs. The FEMA Community Rating System Program, and then providing technical assistance to other departments. Next. So our cap improvement program and our solid waste collection contract gives you an idea of our total expenditure funding. You can see that nineteen twenty, we spent over eighteen million dollars in CIP expenditures. Although some of that was, this was as of September twentieth. We haven't spent all of it, I think you'll be seeing some carryovers coming forward on some of that work. Under surface water utility, we look at five million dollars, five point six million, two million of that was grant funded. And then our solid waste collection contract, it'll, it's been through the day seventeen. Next. So our transportation system, these projects are in various stages of work. The impacts of grants on our transportation system is enormous and what allows the city to advance substantial projects. It's really a tribute to the work of the transportation staff under Jim Sights and the efforts, their efforts in securing a lot of this bundle. As you can see, the, looking back, we've secured over fifteen million grants for the following projects. Complete Streets, the Northeast Sunset Boulevard, corridor improvements, safe routes of transit, I four oh five forty-fourth Street Gateway Signage, Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements, Phase Four B, Renton Connector, the South Second Street Conversion Project, and the South Seventh Street Corridor Improvements. Again, you can see the status of those projects on the side, some are in progress, some of them haven't started yet. But again, the work on those folks acquiring fifteen million dollars in grants is enormous, all on their part. Next. Not only the city is investing in roadway systems, but also in developed the Renton Trail and Bicycle Mass Plan to promote other modes of transportation. In addition, staff has undertaken efforts to improve access to transit through collaboration with the King County Metro and Sound Transit. This, the Trail and Bicycle Mass Plan is an invaluable document to show Renton's commitment to these systems and a valuable tool for soliciting and securing funding for projects in, in this, in this document. As I said, these types of plans have really helped us as we go through the grant, the agencies find projects that fall within their guidelines that allow us to advance the development of these non-motorized infrastructure networks. Next. And as I indicated earlier, the street fit strategic efforts to improve access to transit. You know, we completed the Renton Transit Access Study, we worked with Kent Auburn Metro on area mobility plan for the future rapid ride eyeline. We've enhanced service to meet the needs of the community and community feedback and working with Sound Transit on a new South Renton Transit Center. This map kind of shows you the efforts and where those work is coming, where those work has been undertaken as we move forward. Next. Really just looking back again, some of our traffic safety improvements, we've created the new twenty mile an hour speed limit program for residential streets. We expanded the radar speed sign program, we've improved school crossings, and we've responded to public requests and completed associated, or a large number of associated workloads. Next. We've improving traffic safety, we're filling short or missing sidewalk links, making curb ramps ADA compliant. Some of these key locations includes Hoquam Avenue and Northeast and Northeast Sixth Street, Edmond Avenue Northeast, Northeast Twelfth Street, bike lanes on Edmond Avenue Northeast and Union Avenue Northeast. Next. The city has an extensive fiber network that allows for the integration of software utilized to adapt the traffic control system for the coordination and control of sapping signals across our urban road networks. That's really what our SCOOP system is, it's an adaptive system that allows them to tie the, tie signal timing together and the accomplished ability to move traffic through more, more effectively. This system of fiber network will allow us, as we integrate it into our traffic control center, allows it to be designed to be adapted and changed accordingly and connect with other signals to see how the traffic flow works in order to adapt the timing to meet the demands of traffic and directions at various times of the day. Next. So as we move forward into the next year, here's a list of projects that we have looked at in terms of the capital improvement program for your consideration in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget. These aren't listed in any order of priority, but the Air Force Office, Airport Office renovation is in final stage of design. The Shore Lading Minigation, we're in, beginning the design phase. Taxiway Alpha Rehabilitation, which is a, a project's been envisioned for a number of years, we're really in the pre-designed phase. That was one that's going to rely on the airport improvement dodges dollars from the FAA to pay for that. The pavement management, we'll look at our design as we start the assessment of our pavement management at the airport. Our surface water system, we need to take a look at our surface water system, ensure that we don't have flooding at the airport. There are certain locations where we do have some ponding issues that come up as a result of the high, high flows on the Cedar River. And then the airport north entrance and parking lot rehabilitation, we're starting on a pre-designed level there. Next. As you can see, these are the expenditures for the airport CIP for budget years twenty-one, twenty-two. There's already a caveat in that this was done in the preliminary budget, but we, as we've already taken a look at, you'll see there's a number of projects that we're having to adjust in from twenty twenty that are moving into twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one projects that'll move into twenty twenty-two. So as we move forward, we'll continue to assess these projects and move them forward. Next. Our Maintenance Services Division really maintains our city right of ways and the infrastructure for our utilities. Our goal is maintain overall condition index of seventy for our streets. But as I indicated last year, our, our overall condition index, OCI or paving condition, condition index, PCI is down to sixty-seven. So we, we need to continue to keep track of that and make the improvements necessary to try and bring those road conditions back up. We're going to provide high quality water and sufficient quantity that meets or exceed the state regulatory requirements, that's our drinking water group. Minimize surface water flooding and overflows, that's really through proactive maintenance in terms of our pipeline flushing programs, our video inspection programs, and our preventative maintenance on stormwater facilities. Ensure safe, available, and reliable vehicles and equipment for city use. This includes our entire city fleet for use by not only public works, but police, community economic developments, community services. And in, in regards to that, we proposed to purchase over forty-four vehicles and equipment in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty, and twenty-three vehicles and equipment in twenty twenty-two. It really is about making sure that as we evaluate these equipment for replacement, we replace those equipment that meet both the age requirements, but also meet the mileage and condition requirement, requirements for replacement of equipment. We don't want to replace equipment before it needs to be done, but we also want to replace it before we have big expenditures on, in terms of maintenance and repair of that equipment. So it's a fine line and the one that our fleet folks utilize these statistics in terms of the mileage, the age, the repair history of the vehicle and what they're seeing as those vehicles come in to make the right decision on which vehicles we need to purchase. And again, as we look forward to our, our commitment to an integration of more diverse workforce reflected by the community as the, as the opportunities present itself, as we get new folks coming in, make sure that we work with our partners in human resource to ensure that we, we have the best available candidates, but those that based on their ceiling qualifications and not based upon any implied bias. And the, the, the process for recruitment has been refined by, refined by the folks in human resources. So they take away any characteristics in that initial review that would, would give you a hint as to the any sort of characteristics that would tip the, either the, the race or the, the gender of the applicant so that any implicit bias would not be considered at that point in time. So we're really happy to see those kind of pro, programs put in place to help us as we move forward. So looking forward. Our utility system, got a lot of projects in our utility system, just to highlight a few of them. It's a substantial workload that's going to occur in our next budget cycle. Our downtown utility infrastructure improvement project that's going to be under construction here soon. The Kennedyale Reservoir Zone Three Offsite Improvements will be starting construction soon. We've gotten the bids in, I think we'll be coming to you council with those bid improvements pretty soon. The Highland six point three million gallon reservoir project is looking into the next two years. Duval Avenue Water Improvement Project, Thunder Hills Sewer Interceptor Rehabilitation Project, North Jefferson Stormwater Green Connections and Highland Water System Improvement Projects. This will be a project in which we produce some water system improvements and as well as some stormwater improvements that will allow for infiltration into wall, some water natural infiltration systems before that goes into the pipe and goes down away to help by clean some of that water that ends, entered that storm drain system. The Heather Downs Detention Facility Project and then the sewer for main and the forced main lift station rehabilitation projects in addition to other projects. It's a hefty workload for the utility division. Next. So as you can see, our request in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two request for capital improvements. Our water utility, as I said, one point four six million in twenty twenty-one, three point six eight million in twenty twenty-two. Same weather wastewater utility, as we start to move from design to construction, you'll see a larger dollar amount in the out years as we get to the point in time where these plants are done and we're moving into construction. Same with surface water utility, you can see in the second year of the budget, a very large increase in capital request because of the construction of Heather Downs Detention Facility, the Monroe Avenue Northeast Fourth Street Infiltration Project as well. So, as well as some other projects will be moving forward towards construction. Next. So our Town Town Utility Project, this is just an overview, you can see the utility improvements that are included as part of the Transportation Williams and Wells projects in the, in the box there on the right-hand side of your screen, but you'll see other work that's occurring along Second and Third Avenue in support of the utility infrastructure improvements in the downtown. Next. Our Surface Water Capital Utility Program, as I said, you can see there's a lot of work to occur here on Monroe Avenue, Cedar, Cedar River, twenty, two oh five Levy Recertification Project. A lot of these are design and construction over the next two years. You can see about eight projects that are moving forward into construction over that, out of the sixteen in that two-year period. So we've got a lot of work coming forward, as indicated in the budget request. Next. Here's a map showing our surface water system capital improvement program, those projects that were listed on the previous pages. It shows you an area of the map of where these projects were at. Our CMP Storm System Replacement Program, Small Drainage Projects, Stormwater, those are a part of our citywide projects as well as the individual projects that exist in those on various portions of the city. Next. This is our Monroe Infiltration System Improvement Project. It's going to take the stormwater pipe off Monroe that currently flows into that detention basin there. That's in the process of being filled. And what we're proposing to work is a water quality treatment plant and then propose infiltration facility underneath the new upgraded facility that will occur on that, on that private property site. Next. And then some, under the wastewater, some in listed projects, we have moved forward to downtown sewer rehabilitation replacement, talked about those, that's currently under construction. It's part of that, the Kennedyale Lakeline Sewer Upgrade, we're really just starting the first part of that design. The utility commission, or committee saw that earlier this year, a presentation on that project. It's going to be a big lift as we move forward the next couple of years. Our sewer lift station rehabilitation, again, back part of our maintenance and repair responsibilities to make sure our lift stations are functional and connected and able to, not, able to process that waste a bit forward. Our same thing with our forced main rehabilitation replacement, as we look at our lift stations, ensure that our forced mains are tied to those are, are in good shape. Our sanitary sewer rehabilitation replacement, this is the design of a construction project in the Highlands area. And then we have miscellaneous emergency repair projects that occur over the course of the year. Next. You can see the map of the areas where we'll be undertaking the sanitary sewer replacements, rehabilitation replacements are those big squares as well as some of the other intercept sewer projects that we have going on in the, in the city. Next. As we talked a little bit earlier, the Kennedyale Lakeline Sewer Upgrade, this is an old lake line that was put in the nineteen seventies. It's out in the water, the lake, and we want to move it out of the lake onto the surface area to prevent both deterioration and to eliminate potential discharges into the lake, unintentional discharge, the discharge of something less into the lake. Next. So our water capital utility improvement program, again, there's a lot of projects here that are moving from either in construction or in, from design to construction. I think there's almost eleven of the sixteen projects will be in the construction phase in the next two years. A few of those are in the plan phase, the water system plan, emergency response plan update. And then our automatic meter reading conversion project, we'll continue with that, the Aquaform Monitoring and Management Program. But most of these are, again, water main replacements and infrastructure replacements, part of our water utility system investment. Next. This is really a map of our water capital improvements programs, those exist throughout the city. A lot of those projects are listed on the other page, so you can see the diversity of work that occurs in order to maintain our water capital system. Next. This is our Highlands four thirty-five zone reservoir project, as you can see. There's the existing reservoir, that one point five million gallon reservoir that's to remain. And then we're going to remove an existing two million gallon reservoir and reconstruct a six point three million gallon reservoir in place. And then construct about twenty-one hundred feet of various sized water mains, sixteen, twenty-four, and twelve inch water main to provide for the distribution of that water throughout the system. Next. Our Kennedyale Reservoir Offsite Improvements, again, the Kennedyale Reservoir is complete, but this, the reservoir is not brought online yet, as we have to do offsite improvements to make those connections, to remove them from a different pressure zone. So rates and fees increases for twenty twenty-one, this is just a preview of what we're proposing for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two rate increases for water, wastewater and surface water. for 2021 and 2022 rate increases for water, wastewater and surface water. The increases to keep up with CPI and material costs are relatively minimal. We take a look at our existing revenue and generation and the cash between, oh, take a look at our, I'm sorry, revenue generation, our expenditure needs, our capital improvement needs, our reserve policies to ensure that we had adequate reserve levels. And we projected those out, did our computations, we were able to see that we could do with a modest increase this year in order to stay up with CPI but not increase the rates very high. In the solid waste rates, you can see that the residential is supposed to go up two percent, the commercial is going to go down four percent. And this is really to rebalance the revenue generation and cash between the residential and commercial accounts for the collection service. In some respects, our commercial has been subsidizing the residential to a certain extent. We want to make sure, try and rebalance that all so that we can ensure that each sector of the solid waste system takes care of itself. So what you'll see in the coming year is a four percent reduction in commercial accounts. And then our roll-off service will also be a raise, an increase of two percent. Commercial will go down four percent for the first year and zero percent for year two as it, again, as part of that rebalancing act. And then the SDC, which is the System Development Charges, these are the new development charges that are proposed as part of new facilities, our new commercial and residential facilities coming into the city. You can see our SDCs were in 2020, were essentially forty-four-hundred dollars, it's going to go to forty-four-fifty in 2021 and forty-five-hundred in 2022. Same thing with wastewater, SDCs will be going from thirty-four-hundred in 2021, twenty-twenty to thirty-four-fifty in 2021 and thirty-five-hundred in 2022. And our Surface Water System Development Charge will go from nineteen-hundred in 2020 to two thousand in 2021 and twenty-one-hundred in 2022. Next. And this is an overview of what the average monthly single-family bill will look like. As you can see, it's important to note that the minor impacts to the homeowner, or should say the impacts are relatively minor to the homeowner while we're trying to meet the needs to invest in our system, infrastructure and maintain it in a manner which the community has come to expect. We will be dipping into our reserves and the solid waste utility, but again, we were certainly not going below our minimum utility, our minimum reserve levels as indicated. And we have a balance in our think that can sort that, which is why we've recommended a smaller increase in the residential side of only two percent while trying to rebalance the revenue loss from the commercial side. And you can see the total increase at the bottom of the page. Currently, a average monthly bill is a hundred and four dollars and eighty-five cents for all the four utilities. It will go to one-oh-six-ninety-four for 2021 and one-oh-nine-oh-eight for 2022. So it's a relatively two-dollar-and-nine-cent increase for the first year and a two dollars and I believe it's fourteen-cent increase for the second year. So relatively, again, it's modest, or we think modest by nature. Excuse me, sorry. Our Transportation Capital Improvement Program. And it's a lot, and there's a lot of information on this page that you should seem familiar to the council as you have just reviewed and approved the passing of the Transportation Improvement Program, Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program last week. So some of these will be very familiar. Again, twenty-nine projects with funding in 2021, 2022, a little less than there are in our TIP because these are only projects, projects in the CIP are really projects in which we have the funding for. The TIP includes some projects that are more of a planning on our planning horizon, not necessarily as part of our, we don't have the funding for them yet. So the number of projects by category, seven roadway projects, ten maintenance and preservation projects, four operations and safety projects, five non-motorized projects, trails, bike lanes and other programs and planning projects, three other programs, planning projects. Next. As you can see in our TIP, we have a large amount of federal and state grants. As we indicated before, a lot of that money, that's certainly two-thirds of the funding for our Transportation Capital Improvement Programs coming from grant-type resources. Our Transportation Impact Fee is contributing one-point-three million, our BNO tax, nine-thirty-eight twenty-twenty-one, six-fourteen twenty-twenty-two. Our fuel tax, due to the uncertainty of the revenue forecast for 2021, 2022, it really reflects no fuel tax allocation because that's all going into our maintenance and operation of our streets section, which is funding the crews that work in those areas. But we will continue to monitor the actual tax revenue receipts throughout 2021. And if we find that those revenue come in higher than our projected forecast, then staff will take a look at reallocating those funding into the other programs associated with the two, into the two-year budget, including our arterial and street rehabilitation projects. Next. So this is an overview of our Transportation Improvement Plan. Again, it shows the project, tip project number, those that are funded, those that are candidate projects from our tip, as I said, there's a couple of those, and then the projects led by others, projects that are associated and working with our folks on a regional basis, either the Town Transit or King County Metro or Washington. Next. Then looking forward, construction continue on our, or begin on the following projects, the Williams and Wells Two Ways Conversion, which we're under construction now, continuing forward, the Due To All Avenue Northeast Roadway Improvements, the Late Washington Loop Trail Phase Three, Park Avenue North Extension, the Bronson Way Bridge, the size of retrofit and painting, and the rear app, Rainier Avenue South Quarter Improvements Phase Four-A. And then, and looking at 21, 22 in our transportation area, design to continue on the following projects, our Southwest Forty-third Street Resurfacing Project, South Seventh Street Quarter Improvements, Northeast Sunset Boulevard Quarter Improvements, South Second Street Conversion Projects, the Renton Connector, the Houser Way Bridge, size of retrofit and painting, the William Avenue, size of bridge, size of retrofit and painting, and the rear app, Rainier Avenue South Quarter Improvements Phase Four-B. So I thank you for listening to my presentation and hope that I answered your questions, given you an eye, overview of the Public Works Department in the years ahead, and I'm certainly available to answer any questions as best my ability, based on my four months, ten days here in the city of Renton.
Thank you, Martin. I pretty much appreciate your presentation. Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Madam President, I have two questions, but if you want, I can save my second one for later.
No, go ahead, please.
So, thank you so much, Martin, for that presentation. So when you were talking about department goals, I believe the fourth bullet entailed, and I can't remember the exact wording, but it talked about racial justice. Has there been any conversation in the department about what to do to work with disadvantaged businesses or women-owned businesses as far as contracts in the city of Renton?
Well, certainly, Councilmember Prince, as currently, you know, all our federal dollars and most of our transportation projects receive a vast amount of money through grants, and those federal grants all require, have a DBE, MBE requirement to them. So those are, that's built into those projects. One of the things that we're going to need to continue to work on is on the projects that aren't required to have those, is to do a better job of trying to integrate that criterion into those. And so we can encourage minority businesses. Part of that is really getting out and doing a better job of outreach now to those industries, those areas where those focus, focused upon, encouraging a better, better work on our consultants to bring in subconsultants. And a lot of them do, but we need to sort of work on improving those statistics.
Okay, thank you. My second question, I may have missed it because my kids ran in and asked me a question that distracted me. Any, any word on what we're going to do as far as our sidewalk plan in this budget?
We've got some small dollars available for sidewalk plans, but as I said, we were greatly impacted by the loss of our fuel tax revenue this year and then the fact our BNO tax is down. So we don't have as much money to put in capital improvement projects. We are continuing to work on our ADA plan. And then as we, as we continue to do improvement projects, we will do have some sidewalk work. I think the work we were going to do last year as part of our street rehabilitation program is actually going to go into sidewalk work this year, and then we'll take the rehabilitation money from next year's and put it into doing the pavement work. So we are doing some, some work on sidewalks, certainly not as much as we need to do.
Thank you, Martin. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Prince. And I'm going to follow up with a question because it's related to sidewalks as well. Martin, the City of Renton Comprehensive Citywide Walk, Walkway Study is from 2008. It doesn't even include the, an exception of Benson Hill. The chief just mentioned that we are going to be working in the new comprehensive plan or it's not called new, but it's the, how do you say, the update, updated comprehensive plan. I know that, that, to update this, this plan, it requires money, and I know that this probably is not the year to do that. But how important it is to have this updated before we update the comprehensive plan?
It's somewhat updated. The main thing for us is to make sure we have the standards available. And part of that's doing the assessment of where the sidewalk needs are and then ensuring that as new development occurs, we make sure those standards are in there requiring those sidewalks put in place. While I understand the plan is older and we need to do some work on that, we still need to, I think we have a good idea of where we are, obviously from our statistics, we know where we have it and where we don't have it, really trying to figure out a way to integrate those sidewalks into those communities where we need to put them in place, whether it's on one side of the street or both, but at least putting it on one side of the street gives them a walkway. And those are the things that we need to continue to work on. It's a, again, it's a dollar value project, it's high, it's difficult to do because most times we do not see grants, very few grants that come in for sidewalk projects, that's sort of part of a community's desire to do that. And as we, again, because if we can get new development that comes in and helps pay for that, we'll do that. But we also have to sort of make an investment as a community to bring those priorities up.
Thank you, Martin. Councilmember Benedetti.
Thank you so much. Let me unraise my hand. I had three questions. Is it all right if I ask them and ask them? Or would you prefer we go around?
If it's a follow-up question of your first question, yes, but if it's a different question, I would like, like to go around other council members and then come back to you.
Okay, I have, there are three separate questions, so we'll start with the first. How's that?
Great.
I too had a question around, Martin, by the way, Martin, thank you so much. That was, you, you make infrastructure sound interesting and I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
So this is getting back to your goals, which is on Section Three, Page 110. And I too had a question around the piece where you were talking about equity hiring. And the fourth bullet down doesn't actually speak to hiring. I'm wondering if we can, if, if the language could be changed there to include it. It says, "Providing effective resolution of human resource issues," but it doesn't speak specifically to hiring. And since you called it out in your presentation, I'm wondering if we can make sure it's called out in the budget document.
I think that one was managing personnel, providing effective resolution of human resource issues, supportive part of the division. I think that's really because of the personality issues we may have. I don't know if it was reported hiring. We can certainly add something again back to, I think you were looking at contract hiring?
No. Well, Councilmember Prince was looking at contract hiring. I was speaking to the, you spoke quite well in your presentation to wanting to make sure that your, the hiring for the department, Houston, was, was done as, in a way where it maximized the opportunity for equitable hiring, but I don't actually see it laid out in the Department Administrative Division Goals here in three-ten, one-ten.
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at making that. Matt, add some language to reflect that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Benedetti. I will come back to you. Councilmember O'Halloran?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to lower my hand here. So if I recall, this goes back to sidewalks. If I recall, at the 2019 council retreat, there was a conversation at the time about revisiting the whole complete streets program as it applies, you know, that somehow we thought that we had to apply complete streets to every single circumstance in the city. And there was discussion around maybe that there's some soft-sided paths or gravel or things like this that we could use instead of the complete streets in some particular instances that was not only a little bit more maybe friendly to the neighborhood, but also much easier to implement and much, much less expensive. So I wonder if we've, if we, if we carried any of that discussion forward this year? It's, it's, it's been a couple of years now, so that was my thinking.
Certainly. I understand in the Renton Trails and Bicycle Mass Plan, which was done in January 2019, I think that's probably where that was referenced to was the connectivity process of some of the trails that may connect through the neighborhoods to some of the sidewalk areas. But there's certainly, I think there's been some discussion about that, is, you know, creating an actual connected system, finding a way to integrate that into both our neighborhoods, our community and the, and the region in general. So I mean, there's various pathways, but we want to make sure that, find that connectivity as we can. And that would be in lieu of maybe sidewalk areas, not everybody, you know, we can always put sidewalks in. And sometimes the trails are a natural shortcut that had existed for years between right-of-ways that exist where people walk through them. So there's a natural connectivity between the trails and the sidewalks as a pedestrian pathway for folks to utilize to get to the places they want to go to, whether it's bus stops or community centers or community shopping centers.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Halloran. Councilmember McKeerby?
Yes, thank you. I had a question related to the rate and fee increases slide. And that was the, you had mentioned that we were rebalancing between commercial and residential. So I apologize in advance for asking a question that may be more historically based, and I'm trying to remember if I got this right. If we did some of that balancing and we got the new solid waste contract in, and I know we at one point did offer a decrease on the residential side. So I'm, my question is, is what is the driver, I suppose, for rebalancing it in this case? I do agree that two percent is a modest increase for, for residential, and I would certainly see for some of our small businesses, that four percent certainly in times of COVID can make a big difference. And I guess I'm curious, for some of the larger businesses, what does that rate decrease look like in their bill?
It's hard to say because it's really based upon the amount of containers and the frequency of collection that they utilize. But the issue here is more, more than anything else, it has to do with the fact, again, back to, there's a certain subsidy that exists within, that's built into the rate system for commercial paying a higher fee than that, that revenue pays some of the offset cost of the residential. And that's, that's been in, the communities I've been in, that's a pretty standard practice industry. The concern we have was that it was getting to a higher amount. And we'll come back to the utility commission later on and talk with you about this as we do a little more information. I think we're presenting the rates coming forward here in the next couple of weeks. You'll see it on the agenda and I as a, as a refer to, to the utility commission for the rates for this year. But it really has to do with the fact that there was a lot of revenue generated at the commercial side is taking, when you look at the amount we're paying contracts and for disposal, there's a lot of that that's subsidizing the residential side. And so we wanted to try and balance it a little more so than what you would find on average in, in the industry as a whole.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McKeerby.
Jan, I don't know if you'd be able to turn on my camera. It's been off. I think it was turned off by the...
Don't let me do that. Julia, are you?
There it is. Sorry, I didn't mean to be a blank slate.
It's okay. Councilmember Van?
Turn it on.
It's good.
Madam President, I have a question following up, just because you, thank you again, Martin, for your presentation and you speak, it's very much informative. And also, thank you so much for reiterating and talking about, you know, outreach and how we can do differently. Do you have a plan in regarding to that? I know you've mentioned some translation in different languages, but how can we move forward to really implement the racial equity and equity portion of the outreach? So do you have a plan in place?
We haven't developed a plan in place yet. Yeah, I think it's kind of a work in progress as we continue to look forward, and we will do it in different areas, obviously, as we look at going. Obviously, as we look at going out and doing project work, we need to make sure that we go out and inform the community and do it in languages that they understand so that everybody has the same opportunity to understand the work that's going to occur in your neighborhood. As we put programs in place to sort of encourage recycling or composting or any of those other types of activities, we make sure, again, we put it in language that the residents can understand. So we try and capture as large as possible of a group of folks that can, that will want to participate in this program, but also need to have the information and language that they can understand so they're able to participate in those programs. We'll continue to look at that from our contracting side, again, our outreach side. We'll take a look at it from our publication side. It's really sort of making sure that we have pulled these things together. And as, as we go forward, I think we're all in the process of doing a better job of educating ourselves and our workforce into these sorts of issues. And I'll certainly rely on our staff as we move forward to sort of better understand that and develop plans to include, ensure that we include equity inclusion in our, in our various programs and activities.
Thank you, Councilmember Van. Councilmember Benedetti?
Thank you. So Martin, I was taking a look here at the solid waste goals on Page 126 or 126 of Section 3. And I noticed the first bullet is talking about coordination with Republic Services. My question is, do you know when that contract comes up for rebid?
I don't, but I'll get to the information. I thought it was, we had just opened the contract within the last two years, so it's, I think it's got at least another three, and maybe longer than that. I really don't want to venture this.
During this period?
No, I don't, but I believe it, it will not be coming up in this two-year period.
Okay, thank you. Do you have another question, Councilmember Benedetti? Oh, I do. I'll finish it off here, I promise, Council, Council President.
And I interrupt for a minute. Lynda Knight is in the audience. She might have the answer to the contract question.
Lynda Wood.
I do. Thank you for unmuting my mic. The contract is a 10-year contract. It's up in 2026. It does have a provision that allows for up to two, two-year extensions. So what we typically look at is kind of what the economic conditions are within the timeframe that we're looking at going out for a new procurement process. And if the economic conditions are looking unfavorable for the city compared to what the contract offers us, we might recommend extending the contract. But if the flip is, if, if economic conditions are more favorable for the city, we would probably recommend going out with a new procurement process. I don't know if that answered your question, but...
Lynda, 10 years from when?
2017 was when we implemented, February of 2017 was when the new contract went into place. It's actually over, a little bit over a 10-year contract, so.
All right, so 2027 then is when it would become to, or time for reconsideration?
Yeah, I mean, okay, we look at it in terms of how we go out for the procurement process, when we have to make the selection of whether we extend the contract or not extend the contract.
Okay. Thank you, Lynda. You make a...
Thank you.
Councilmember Benedetti?
I'm sorry, and this is just a final question going to Page 118 with, under your operational goals. So I see numbers here, review and respond to 300 citizen traffic, prepare over 200 workers. Am I right in saying that those are, that those are your anticipated work based on what happened in 2019 and 20, not that those are backlog, right?
That's correct. Those are historical numbers, based on, based on those, yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Benedetti. Any, any more questions, Councilmembers? Okay, Martin, I do have another question.
Certainly.
You, the, as, as Chief mentioned, the comprehensive, the, the comprehensive plan is going to be, starting updating this year, next year. And, well, we have done a very good job following the instructions of the Growth Management Act, bringing more density to our city. One of the things that has been a challenge is the, the resources that the legislature promised that they were going to be appropriated for infrastructure and services. I want to know how involved your department is going to be on the date of this comprehensive plan to bring that voice that is so needed to make sure that while, that we, we have a smart growth in our city, meaning if we are going to bring the density that is required to, for this area, we really need to bring the, the services and transportation, infrastructure that has been promised over the years.
You're exactly right, Councilmember Perez. If we are going to take that level of growth, then we need to have the backbone infrastructure in place to be able to handle it. And I think one of the, one of the bad things that happens is cities start from a lot of times from a deficit where you know, their planning that was done as a county level for a much more rural environment that also develops over time based on demand. And then the infrastructure is constantly in a state of catch-up. And so I think part of that is to make sure that as we move forward and look at those, the comp plan, we need to ensure that we have plans in place both from our wastewater, our surface water, our water system, and for our transportation system that show what the level of improvements are going to be needed in order to handle the level of traffic to make, to be able to adequately address this growth and not turn into a gridlock or into a place where we get to the point in time where we're not going to accommodate any more growth because we don't have the infrastructure in place to do it. So it's really critical on us to work hand-in-hand with CEV as they, as they develop that comp plan to ensure that our infrastructure plans go along with that and are able to develop and support that level of growth.
Thank you, Martin. You just nailed it. And I want to, once again, welcome you and just let our public know that literally we have never met in person because Martin came to the city when we were in the middle of the pandemic. But certainly you have been a great addition to our staff. Thank you for the great work. And I'm going to pass it to you, Jan, for the final remarks.
Thank you, Councilmember President Perez. I appreciate it. And I know that our staff, I know I have enjoyed the times of work together. And I know that the staff enjoys working with the entire council. And I've, again, I enjoyed my time with the council and really look forward to continuing that relationship, but hopefully someday in person.
Thank you, President Perez and all the members of the council for giving us this time tonight. We have the balances of departments teed up and ready to present to you at four, starting at four o'clock next week again on October 19th. And then what we don't get through, we will, we'll roll over to the October 26 meeting. Or if we get through it, then you can continue your deliberation at that point. We will get back to you with responses to the questions that we weren't able to answer here tonight. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you all. Thank you. And if there is none other questions right now, this meeting is secured. Thank you.